All right, welcome ladies and gentlemen to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. This business meeting, August 25th, that's not August. It's, Mary, what day is this today?
September 18th.
It's happened last time, all right, September 18th. I'm recalling that meeting in order, and the August one is well past. So I'd ask Mr. Krupp, our county administrator, to please take the role.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Commissioner Reynolds.
Present.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Commissioner Smith is excused. Would you all please rise with me and join the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on the agenda is, Mr. Krupp, we have a special presentation.
Yes, so I'm going to introduce Nancy Bush, who is the Director of Emergency Management for Clackamas County, and we've invited Ms. Bush to come and give you a presentation and an update regarding the pit 36?
Thirty-six.
Fire, 36 pit fire up in the Estacate area, so go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. So yes, we do have a map up, just to kind of show where the fire has and how it has progressed over several days. But we do have a much better handle on it today. There is at least a 30% containment at this point. All residents have been put back on Level 2 that were on Level 3 before, which includes the Silver Fox RV Park. The firefighters are mopping up in some spots adjacent to, and making some adjacent fire lines, trying to keep the fire back. And we, the weather, of course, gave us a great relief overnight because we actually had measurable rain and was able to help us to hold things back. There is a concern down, I'm sorry, on the west side, there is a very, very steep ridge right there. And if it hits that ridge, it's going to go up the ridge and it's going to be a little bit more difficult to fight. They have a lot of people over there spotting, trying to make sure they know exactly where the fire is. The weather is still going to be on our side for the next couple of days. Over the weekend, we do have an east wind coming in that we're concerned about because that east wind could pick this up and move it over that boundary in that area. The river, that's the river right there, which is a natural boundary, they're using that and some other structures, roadways, et cetera, to try to keep the fire from going any further. And it has not moved significantly and grown significantly over two days now, so that's also good news. Just to let you know about the residents, because we've been working very closely with them, especially the individuals from the Lazy, I'm sorry, that's Lazy Ben Campground, but from the RV park, the Silver Fox RV Park, we have moved many of them with their RVs into Barton Park. We are not charging them. We have told them they can be there until September 30th, so we're giving them plenty of time if they can't go back in anytime soon to find other accommodations. They were let back in today, but when they got in, they found out they had no water or power. They think the water line may have been broken by a bulldozer, but they're trying to find that out and fix it. The air quality is very poor in there, as you can imagine, so we're working very closely with that population, trying to make sure that they have what they need. Tomorrow, we are going to have a food bank truck that is going to come out because there are some food concerns, so that everyone can go get some food, bring it into their RVs. We also have a few people that are camping there too in tents. So we're working with them very closely. Social Services has also really, really been helping us and trying to make sure that they are provided services. There will be another community meeting on Saturday evening, and when I left the office, they still had not announced the time of that meeting, but I believe all Commissioners will receive an invitation to that. And I will make sure that if I get it before you do, that I send it out to you as early as I can. So we just keep plugging along. There have been, there's been a tremendous amount of help from county. The Parks Department has been excellent to work with and has been working with us so well in providing as much help as they can to residents as they come in. And there are several departments in the county that have been working in the EOC. And I'll open it up for questions.
Commissioners, questions? I would note for people looking at the Silver Fox RV Park, that park is much more permanent than it is temporary, is that my understanding?
That is correct, yes, sir.
So these are people in their travel trailers, RVs, et cetera, living there on rather a permanent basis. And like you said, the concern is water, for one thing, pretty primary. It's a shame that Lazy Ben, if you've never been to Lazy Ben Campground, it was awesome and it will not be now. Now, let me ask you the fundamental question that bugs me. How did this go from 30 acres to over 3,000 in a couple of days? And why?
Well, there was, of course, there were weather issues. This actually started on the US Forest Service land, so it was their responsibility, it's technically their incident. And they had the responsibility for fighting the fire. And the fuels there are extremely dry, and it just, it grew very, very quickly. I mean, it doubled overnight, two nights in a row.
Commissioner Savis.
Well, myself and Commissioner Smith were out there Tuesday evening for the meeting, and it was very telling when we approached and walked in that there were people out in the parking lot that were set up with their campers and living out in the parking lot. And I'd say that despite all the uncertainty and so forth, that the spirits of people were actually, were good, and there was a lot of folks working together, and the community had really pulled together. And I thought all the, all the emergency personnel, fire sheriffs, whatnot, were well-received. And that was when, of course, we got the first news that there was some containment, I believe it was 7%, that was announced. But you get a sense of how, you know, how, well, how many people were there? I was at least 200 people, I think there were there.
That's what I estimated, sir, yes, it was 200 people.
Standing room only, out in the hallways, but, but it was really, you know, it was definitely there were people there working to help one another, and I think that was great. And hopefully, this will be contained soon and under control, and we'll just keep our fingers crossed. And Mother Nature has a role on this.
It does, and the weather plays a huge role, so, but it's a great community spirit there.
I guess my concern, I voiced it before earlier this week, is that, you know, this is not just a Clackamas County event, not when they're showing red flags down in Albany and Corvallis, where people's breathing would be affected and the ash all over their cars. This is much bigger than that. And tell me something, the Forest Service, I believe, has a let-it-burn kind of a natural occurrence kind of a philosophy, do they not?
Yes, they do have protocol. I'm, I'm not a firefighter, so I can't answer all those questions, but yes, they do have protocol. The Fires, the US Fire Service in particular does have more of a policy of burning, letting it burn.
That doesn't matter if it's a more heavily urbanized area or not?
It does. Considering where the fire was started, I do know that they had people on the ground trying to fight it when it did start. And there is, it's very, very steep ground in there. They did not have, I don't think, as much air resources in. So I did find out they did have people on the ground trying, but when it hit steep ground, it was hard to get in.
And again, you know, I appreciate the Forest Service was involved, but they don't have to clean up the mess. That's our partners and all these people coming together. And you know, I would ask that somehow, we've talked about it briefly, but is that we relay to the federal government that they may have that philosophy of let it burn, but that is area-specific, or should be. And in fact, when it's this close to an urbanized area, just even to the city of Estacate, very close.
Yes.
And also, the effect that it has downwind is dramatic.
Yes.
And we, in the future, I'd like to see anything of 30 acres be attacked with every tool we have, or I should say, under the federal government's disposal, to make sure that this kind of event doesn't happen again.
Yes, and I do agree. I mean, usually, this is right in the middle, you know, where there's not a lot of urban interface, and this was fairly close to urban interface.
Very. All right, any other questions of Nancy? Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners, and I'll get this out, and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And this includes our Housing Commissioner, Paul Reynolds. So consent agenda, Mary.
Yes, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the first quarter of fiscal year 2014-2015.
All right, Commissioners want to remove or pull any item? I'll ask Commissioner Reynolds for a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Excuse me. Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. Commissioner Reynolds, thank you for attending this evening.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate that. So I announce that the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. We have a presentation, Mr. Krupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this first item is going to be fun. We're going to get a presentation to recognize the winners of the Safe Communities Safe Driving Media Contest. I'm going to invite Patty McMillan and Joe Merrick with our Safe Communities program in our Transportation and Development Department to come on in and give you that presentation.
My name is Joseph Merrick. I'm the County Traffic Engineer and the Director of Clackamas Safe Communities, a program focused on reducing injuries and fatalities in the county. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to recognize some amazing students and their efforts to improve traffic safety in the county. Since you adopted the Transportation Safety Action Plan in 2012, demonstrating the county's strong commitment to transportation safety, we've been engaging our young residents to help us with safety messages. With the goal to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes by 50% by 2022, there is much work to be done. Young drivers are one of our top three areas of emphasis for the action plan, and we've been working on many of the five Es, including engineering, education, emergency medical services enforcement, and evaluation. But tonight, we're here to recognize and celebrate the work of some talented high school students, helping with the education component. Why is education so important? Well, it's important because well over 90% of all crashes have a human error component. This year, Safe Communities sponsored a contest called Posters and Coasters, which asked high school students to create safe-driving messages. The response was overwhelming, with almost 100 entries from nearly half of the county's high schools. Tonight, we will provide an overview of the contest and recognize the top three winners. Melody Zou from Lake Oswego High School, Carly Edwards from Sandy High School, and Ellen Scharf from Rex Putnam High School. If these students can take a seat at the podium, you're there, perfect, thank you. Patty McMillan is our Safe Communities Coordinator right here, and works tirelessly to educate and promote transportation safety to many audience, audiences, and she has a short PowerPoint presentation that she would like to share with the Board. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening, and thank you for coming. As Joe mentioned, youth crashes are overrepresented both nationally and in Clackamas County, and we decided to tap into our local talent and sponsor contests to have them make up some safety messages. The contest was open to all high school students in Clackamas County. It ran from February to April. Some of the instructors actually turned the contest into classroom projects, and I would like to thank those instructors for opening up class time, which as I know, in short supply. I would also, oh, that's who we are, I would also like to thank our sponsors. We had several sponsors who were very generous. State Farm Insurance actually granted us two grants totaling $11,000 that are used to reproduce and outreach the media. Clackamas Town Center donated gift certificates for the prizes, $300 for first prize, $200 for second, and $100 for third-place winners. And Total Outdoor provided billboard space for not one, but two billboards, and waived the mounting fees. So let's see what happened. We had 98 entries from six schools. We awarded three top-place prizes and seven honorable mentions. The participating high schools are listed on the PowerPoint. Our grand prize winner, Melody Zou, is sitting front and center. Her poster is called Keep Your Eyes on the Road, and it really impressed our judges with the exceptional artwork and the clever way it delivers a safety message. Melody told me later on that she came up with the idea of drawing the reflection of the road in the eyes of our person up there in order to show that the driver is paying attention to the road. Melody credits her art instructor Katie Brink for guidance. Katie couldn't be here tonight, but thanks to Melody and to Katie Brink. So I want, just a second, so people maybe can look and see that there's the reflection of the road in the eyes of our drawing there. And then we have our second-place winner, Carly Edwards from Sandy High School. Her work, titled Life is a Gift, Rapid and Safety, was on every judge's list. And this message is so important because wearing seatbelts is the single best way to prevent injury, and I think Carly's artwork really captures that. Also, last year, Oregon became the top state in the nation for motorists and passengers wearing seatbelt with over 98% compliance. We are number one, and we should be proud of that. Carly credits her mother for telling her to wear her seatbelt every time she goes for a ride, and if she's not able to buckle up, that her mom will come and get her.
Motivation, you bet.
There you go. And our third-place winner, Ellen Scharf from Rex Putnam High School. Her poster entitled With Great Power Comes Great Responsibility focuses on drivers being dutiful. And I had the pleasure of working a lot in Rex Putnam. I actually work in their Health 1 and Health 2 classes, and would like to thank the health instructor there, Stephanie Leskey, who opens a lot of class time up for these types of projects. Stephanie couldn't be here tonight, but she is a great person to work with. So what happened after we gave out the awards, which included the gift certificates that we mentioned, and some really nice certificates for the girls to keep? Well, we got some great coverage, the Lake Oswego Review, Sandy Gazette, Oregon Live, and in our current issue of Citizen News, we have a great article about the girls and their work. It's on page three. We also took the artwork work to graphic designers because we needed to have it reworked in order to use the media in different venues, including billboards. And here is Melody's billboard that is located on Highway 99 northbound at Umatilla. You can't miss it. I would like to thank Pendleton Woolen Mills, who sponsored this billboard. It'll be up for several weeks, not longer. And here's Carly's billboard on Highway 26 at Hayley Road near Boring. That's near where she goes to school, so hopefully, a lot of her community can see her work. We have received a ton of positive feedback on the billboards. We're also at the mall. Here's Clackamas Town Center, and we've been at the mall in August and will be there through the end of September, so I encourage people to go to the mall and look at these wonderful pieces of work. The sky banner will be outside the food court. One side is Life is a Gift, and the other side is Keep Your Eyes on the Road. And Ellen has a stand-up poster down on the food court floor, as you can see, and we actually have about 10 or 12 other posters scattered through the mall. And actually, there's one of the other posters that's located in the mall, as well as a sky banner over Boons Ferry Road. So that's what we've been doing so far. What are our next steps? Well, what we would like to do is find more ways to keep the media in the public eye, and we need help to do that. We're looking for partners who may have businesses or community venues where the artwork can be displayed, maybe as a poster, maybe we can turn it into a window cling. Personally, I'd love to see a mural. So the opportunities are broad. We do have some funds, as mentioned, to offset some of the cost of supplies, and now we're looking for organizations to partner with. And here's where to find us. If you're, and this information will be available after the Board hearing, but if you're interested, please contact Joe or myself, and we would be, we would love to hear from you. So at this time, I would like to take an opportunity to first, to first thank our sponsors. State Farm Insurance. Jeff Lansstrom, is he in the audience? Why don't you stand up real quick and wave, Jeff, our representative from State Farm Insurance, and he is a representative in Oregon City. Thank you for coming tonight. Also, Total Outdoor for the amazing billboards. We have Account Executive Sunny Wetzel and Chris Doherty here representing Total Outdoor. Sunny and Chris, would you kind of give a wave to the audience? Thank you so much. And Jessica Curtis, who is a Marketing Manager from Clackamas Town Center, she could not be here tonight, but I did not want to go without thanking her. She has supported us, not just with this project, but several other projects. Thanks also to the parents and the teachers for their support and encouragement. I'm sure the girls couldn't have done the work without their support. But of course, to the girls, our winners, Melody, who's sitting in center, Carly on the left, and Ellen. I just can't say how much we're pleased with your work. I have brought, they've already received their gift certificates, I'm sure they're then spent by now. And so we did bring some flowers to present to the girls. But before that, I wanted to ask if the Board has any questions for staff or to the girls about the project, and I hope you enjoy it.
I think it's only fair, Patty, when these three young women, the winners, come forward and sit by microphones, that they have to use them. So this is your great opportunity, you're on TV, it'll be rebroadcast. Mary, can we leave that and have the cameras refocus on the participants here? It'd be nice to hear a couple of words from each of you. The microphones are in front of you, you have to pull them pretty close to your mouth. I see you're all excited and can't wait till the first one steps up. But I think it would be great to hear from each of you, you know, perhaps on your inspiration, a little bit more about how you came up with that one and how you achieved it. It's not a requirement, it's a request.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead. My inspiration was really my mom, as I said, with the seatbelts. She's, it's always been a really big part of safety in her eyes. She's always told me how important it was to make sure that I do that and not to, you know, just get in a car with seven other people and not have a seatbelt. And so I'm not quite sure what made me think of the slogan, but I just really wanted to do something related to seatbelts, and so I just thought about it for a while. The artwork took me about a week and a half. I worked on it during my art class. My art teacher made it a project we had to do, and I also, I took it home, you know, asked my mom, how does this look? What should I do? But it was, it was really fun to just make something to know that I would be making an impact on the community.
And tell us your name.
Carly Edwards.
Okay, thank you, Carly. Well, next, it's only appropriate to hear about the eerie eyes, so tell us a little bit about that. It's very dramatic. Microphone has got to be really close to you, though.
Okay. So my name is Melody Xu, and I, first I had, my art teacher introduced me this contest for Safe Driving Communities poster and coasters, and I was really excited about it. And first, I was thinking what phrase would be best to make, like, people, like, be aware of the safe driving. So I thought, keep your eyes on the road is a really straightforward phrase, and people would really, like, get it. So I just thought about how should I draw the phrase? How can I express it? So I was thinking about if the eyes are on the road, then one must be seeing it, and then I was thinking about how, like, the reflections of the road could be, like, in the eyes, and be really cool. And it shows that the person who's driving has his, has the eyes on the road, and that would be a really cool idea, so I drew it, and it turns out great. So, yeah, I was kind of surprised, too, and I'm just really excited and happy to be helping to promote safe driving and contribute to this community. Thank you.
Well done. And finally, the slogan that we probably understand more than most people is, with great power comes great responsibility. And we, we exercise that on a regular basis. So pull the microphone really close to you, because here we can make sure we can hear you.
So I'm Ellen Scharf, and my health teacher, Mrs. Leskey, made this project a requirement. So I was trying for my permit in, like, a week, and you know, I'd been studying the book, and I just thought about what I would need to be doing, and I knew that it was a big responsibility to be able to drive, and I just sort of started drawing and let it happen, so, yeah, thank you.
Commissioners, and then we're going to have a photo op afterwards, so you know that. If we are done, you know, this is an opportunity, a good time to present the flowers. Commissioners, if you could meet at the front, and ladies who step up with us, we'll have a photo opportunity, so you can have that.
Okay. Testing, one, two, three, test, test. Jeez, I'm sorry. Okay. Test, test. Joe in back. Okay. Test, test, test. Everybody ready? And one more. There we go. Yeah, so, so what? Martha, what? Okay. Ready? Thank you.
Committee, worked hard to, you know, get people involved outside of the community, outside that group, and along with folks who are at work at the county, but also outside the county. So I think Joe and Patty deserve a lot of thanks for their hard work, moving forward with this great idea. Commissioner Savis.
I just want to say there's obviously maybe a future in either marketing, communications, graphic design for these folks, too, so great job, great job in messaging.
Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. Appreciate it.
Good job, girls.
And now it's time for Citizens Communication. I have some cards here. I'll call you up in twos, put two on deck. The first two, now, apologize for pronouncing, Patty Lavelia, is it close? Jeff Caton, followed by Pat Russell and Rick Cook. Please be sure to state your name and the city you come from at the beginning. Thank you.
My name is Patty Savala, and I currently live in Portland, Oregon. I currently work in Clackamas County, supporting youth and families in Kambi at Baker Perry Middle School. I'm here today representing the Hispanic Interagency Networking Team, HINT. We are an organization made up of any service provider who works with the Latino community in Clackamas County. Participant organizations include Todos Juntos, the Department of Human Services, Los Niños Cuentan, Northwest Family Services, Clackamas County's Health, Housing, and Human Services, Juvenile Department, as well as various school districts throughout Clackamas County, to name a few. HINT provides forums that are free of charge in order to educate, inform, and inspire the community to provide services that are culturally relevant to the people we serve. Recent forums have included Latino leaders such as Carlos Crespo, the Director of the School of Community Health at PSU, and Alberto Moreno, the Chair of Oregon Commission on Hispanic Affairs. Clackamas County has an increasingly growing Latino population. Currently Hispanics make up 8% of the population. From 2000 to 2010, the population grew, grew 74%, which is a faster rate than any of our surrounding counties, including Yamp. our surrounding counties, including Jam Hill, Hood River, Washington, Marion County, Wasco, and Munnoma County. Today, we want to share that we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, which began this week to celebrate Latinos, our culture, and our history. It began as Hispanic Heritage Week in 1968 by President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded into a month by President Ronald Reagan, and enacted into law in 1988. Yesterday, HINT, in collaboration with the Clackamas County Festival, sponsored a forum for providers featuring Tim DeRouche from Oregon Humanities, the Conversation Project. He spoke with providers about the importance of collaboration and community building. We want to acknowledge that Clackamas County is an integral part of our community, and we greatly value our partnership. Your regards to the Latino community is evident in the programs you support. Notably, Cindy Becker and the Health, Housing, and Human Services Department, and Ellen Crawford from the Juvenile Department continue to provide, strive for innovative services and a diverse workforce. In addition, the county supports nonprofit agencies that support culturally specific services for the communities and families of Clackamas County. We appreciate your continued collaboration with this vibrant and growing community, and invite you to learn more at our website, www.hintclackamas.com. Thank you.
Well done. You're right on the nose, too, Patty. Well done.
Thank you.
Well, that's important information. The sharing of information is so integral to the success of this county. And I know through H3S, they compile a list and keep a list of 501(c)(3)'s that are there to help people, and I know you're on it, so.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Hi, I'm Jeff Caton. Hi, I live in Happy Valley, Oregon, and I'm here on behalf of the Peer Wellness and Work Initiative, a small nonprofit that works with helping peers and family members that are dealing with mental health challenges. And I'm excited about this new nonprofit, and I'm here to advocate for them, before the county commissioners, in their small grants petition that they've applied for, a small $12,000 grant from the county commissioners to help expand and help this most vulnerable population. Now, the services they provide, which I'm excited about, is that they help those who are experiencing mental health issues, help understand their job skill abilities, help with resume writing, help them understand what kind of work they can do, and help them with finding work and applying for work and being placed in work, in the community. And so they've had already a very good success rate. They've placed dozens of people so far this year, and the retention rate is well in 80% so far this year. So this, this nonprofit, Peer Wellness and Work Initiative, I became aware of through my involvement as a board member on Clackamas NAMI, the National Alliance for Mentally Ill. And they do free services for those with mental illness, of course. And through this new nonprofit, they, this, this work initiative is helping contribute to the county's goals of helping with jobs, helping with wellness, and helping people with their esteem by finding a job. And so I want to appeal and advocate for the county commissioner to please consider their small grant of $12,000 in the coming weeks to help them build capacity and help contribute to dozens of more people in this vulnerable community to become meaningfully employed in our county. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I have a brochure I'd be willing to give you regarding this to pass around.
I think that, you know, let's remember that the small grants program is $200,000, and Commissioner Bernard, actually, answered mental in creating that program. And we have a committee that goes through and vets these and gives us their recommendation. I can't remember when that's coming forward. Do you, Jim?
That's fairly soon.
Pretty soon?
Committee's already met.
The committee's already met. So we don't know what their recommendation is, but we put together a pretty astounding group of people to go through these things. And there's always more need than there is dollars, and we all know that.
Yes, there is.
We appreciate your involvement in that, Patty. Thank you for bringing that important information forward.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Pat Russell and Rick Cook, followed by Dave Adams and Carol Yamada. Either one of you gentlemen may start with your name again and the city you're from.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be reading off of a letter here, so it's a three-minute letter. Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Pat Russell, and I reside at 15989 Southeast Bilquist Avenue in the unincorporated R10 area of North Clackamas, just north of Ritz Road and along Webster Road. I'm a board member of my Clackamas CPO, and one of my CPO's representatives on the McLaughlin Area Plan Implementation Team, known as MAPIT. I am not, however, representing either group tonight. I come to you this evening to ask your commitment to initiate a meeting or two with your agency peers, TriMet, Oregon Transportation Development, Oregon Department of Transportation, City of Milwaukee, or County Fire District, or North Clackamas Park Recreation District, and the Oak Lodge Sanitary District. The purpose of the meeting would be to examine the planning in the activity cluster at Park Avenue and McLaughlin Boulevard, primarily with respect to highway ingress and egress and onsite traffic circulation within and not only the TriMet parking structure, but also the Oak Lodge, Elks Lodge facility. Our McLaughlin Area Plan adopted a few years ago encourages revitalization of the corridor and suggests a focus toward activity clusters, which might be a grouping of properties around key intersections to create a strong sense of community by increasing pedestrian activity, places to meet, or conduct business. These areas, like Park Avenue Station area, would be developed and maintained to facilitate safe traffic flow and parking convenience while encouraging a more pedestrian setting, including the potential for mixed use. The county has undertaken a study of the Park Avenue Station area affecting an approximate half-mile radius geared toward transit-oriented development. However, the plan has not yet been adopted formally by the Board of Commissioners, nor codified into the county's comprehensive plan or zoning and development ordinance. Nevertheless, development of the station area is moving forward. It is my understanding that TriMet has obtained land use and design review approvals and the necessary permits to allow construction of key components of the light rail transit facility, particularly the multi-story parking structure. The parking structure is on the southwest corner of the highway intersection with Park Avenue, and appears to have made no arrangements for mutual access to and from the Elks Lodge complex. It is my understanding members of the community feel the structure will create unsafe, inconvenient ingress and egress for TriMet and Elks Lodge patrons. I believe this site development scheme does not fulfill the MAPIT concepts for encouraging activities to be clustered and integrated near these key signalized intersections along the highway. I believe patrons will become confused trying to use either the parking structure or, and/or the Elks Lodge facilities. Neither parking facility will be able to easily share overflow parking demand. Multiple points of access and reciprocal or mutual onsite traffic circulation would mitigate the planned restrictions of left-hand turning movement conflicts on McLaughlin, especially where patrons can access Park Avenue at the signalized intersection designed to secure left-hand turn movements. Commissioners, I urge you, please, set up a meeting with these key agencies and property owners to facilitate discussion of this issue before the concrete's in place. I believe there are site design opportunities that can address citizen concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Well, a couple of things here. You say that the McLaughlin Area Plan was adopted. Is, I don't believe it was.
As we all know, it's a, it's a, it's a community vision prepared by groups of citizens, a large area, actually, almost over the I-205 in the North Clackamas area. And planning in that area among citizens has been going on for probably a couple decades, to say the least. And even one of our commissioners here was very active in, in, we've, we're having three phases of the MAPIT effort.
Yeah, I know that. I'm just saying it wasn't adopted by this board, though.
The plan was presented to the Board of Commissioners a few years ago. It did not require any formal adoption, but the Board of Commissioners did enter into agreement with this MAPIT group to continue planning. So it shows that there is support along the ideas of furthering the.
And I just wanted to get the point. I appreciate that. But it was not adopted by this body. That's all I want to say about that. But, or the community.
No, the, no, the plan was presented to the board, and the board accepted the plan.
Accepted is not adopted.
I understand.
That's all my point is. Now, on the second part of it, you know, I guess we need to find out, you know, the transit-oriented development, however, this plan has not yet been adopted formally by the Board of Commissioners. I don't think we've seen that, by the way.
I don't think so either.
But the final thing is, you know, my concern is that, do we have any power in this particular situation? We've got, you know, this has gone through a lot of planning, a lot of public input, and certainly through the hearings, officer. And I'm not sure, and maybe Mr. Story can tell us, what power the board has in this particular situation to reassemble people and ask for change.
Well, certainly, I think the board always has the ability to petition. I don't think that we'd have to go back and look at the present circumstances of where the various pieces of the transaction are to talk about whether you could require any changes. That seems somewhat unlikely at this late point. It's likely that, you know, comp plan has been approved, planning has been approved, permits have been issued, so it could be challenging to try and revisit decisions that have already been made.
Commissioner Savas.
So just a couple of clarifications, and I did serve on MAP, the first version of MAP, but even in its current form under MAPIT, the third, the third effort, it's not a designated or a recognized planning agency. They don't run permits, they don't issue permits, they don't look at designs, but they have been more on the implementation of, of help, trying to help along implementation of policies and programs, and that's, that are already in place. And, and I do appreciate, you know, your efforts on all three of those, Pat. You've been involved and active on all those. I, I did get my first briefing today on this, and I talked to ODOT yesterday about this, and trying to verify, figure out what options are, what the risks are. And the way I see it is, is that if we, if it's the Elks Lodge, it is the Elks Lodge property that's affected. If the Elks Lodge believes that they want the safest thing, my concern and my question to the Elks Lodge may be that, and again, I've gotten one version of this, and that might lead to right-in, right-out only. And I'm not sure that's what the Elks Lodge wants, and that's usually a restriction that a lot of property owners don't want. So it'd be nice, nice to know what the consensus of both MAPIT and the Elks Lodge everyone wants, because if there's a lot of pressure about the safety issues there, I think that's what they said would be the only next step, would be, you know, eliminating left turns. And so that's sometimes very contentious for a property owner.
Well, I won't, I can't get into rebuttals, but I see there are many opportunities, and I think the commissioners do have the political pressure to liaison with our state and regional agencies to come up with better solutions. That's basically my argument. I don't have a fight in the game. I'm a citizen observation. Thank you.
Paul?
Just my follow is that we need to probably hear from the, from the property owner, Elks Lodge, and make sure that whoever, whoever their person is, their identified person, a point of contact for this, the decision-maker, if you will, the person who's got the capacity to do that is the one who's speaking on that behalf. And I don't know if the community has had odds with that or not. I don't know what their opinion is, but we've already reached out to both our agency, ODOT, and I think staff is talking to TriMet as well. So I think we were underway, but I know the design's, I mean, the design's there, and they're building it to design currently.
I am a member of that Elks, by the way, and I, I recommend that when they cut this deal, that they save unto themselves that very western portion where the, the plan is to have a hammerhead, as it's known back there. To save that eventually, when it's eventually constructed, after the construction, to save that. We already know that the fire department's going to have access. They just go through those kind of gates, and that is necessary. But the ingress, egress on McLaughlin will, is already dangerous, and will continue to be dangerous. Commissioner Schrader.
Now, I did want to point out that that, I concur with what Commissioner Savas said, that, you know, we've been talking to agencies. I did spend some time with Thelma the other day while we were working on another issue, and she did describe to me a potential accident she almost had, and indeed, there was a serious action, accident in that area where people were brought to the hospital. I do think it's something we ought to take a close look at. I don't know at this late date if anything can be changed, or if there's some way to mediate it in the future. I do agree with you, and it's always been a dangerous intersection, and the question is, is the way it's being set up now making it better or worse? I mean, that's the, that's the dilemma.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I'd say that's hard to say, since it's in the middle of construction, and the barricades, the edges cut off, it's, it's, the driveway's limited, all those things are still under construction. But, you know, I, I have not seen the plan, so I'd be interested in looking at the plan. And certainly, I'm not a traffic engineer either. I don't know what's best. So we could look at the plan and sit down with one of our traffic engineers and, and get their opinion on it, and if we think there's a problem, then I, I'm more than willing to reach out.
Mr. Krupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I am aware that the commissioners have received a number of email communications today on this subject, and that we are in the process of developing a follow-up response to the concerns that have been raised in those emails. I can tell you that I understand that the representatives from TriMet do plan to schedule a meeting in the very near future with representatives from the Elks Lodge to talk about the concerns specifically and see what they can do to resolve the concerns.
So would that include people like, Thelma's name's already been used here, and missed, you know, Mr. Russell? Is that going to be exclusive to the people that were originally involved in this decision-making, or will it be a little bit more open to allow these people to participate?
Well, I don't have an answer to that question, and it's a very good question. Happy to follow up. And we can certainly ask to have a county representative sit in on that particular meeting as well. I think that we should.
Commissioner Savas.
Just my last thought on this, or just wanted to share, is that there was a group of the Oak Grove Community Council, then the Oak Lodge Community Council, that actually were part of the subcommittee to do the design of the light rail station and the surrounding stuff. So I know they had oversight in that, so, you know, that in effect, I want to make sure that everyone involved, all those people are on the same page. If they're all on the same page, we can probably come to a conclusion. But if there's conflicted, then that's going to be very difficult to say, or to ascertain as to who's speaking for who and what the consensus is.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
Good evening. Rick Cook from the Stafford Hamlet. I have three handouts for you. First thing I want to state was that we have some really good-hearted people that work hard and volunteer an incredible amount of time, and we're trying to embrace our vision and value statement and come up with our community vision plan for our future. And it's been, needless to say, like the Hatfields and McCoys on occasion, which I know you've all had a little bit of a email war from some of us. But I think one of the biggest things I want to get out tonight is that I hope our citizens and the committee members, board members, and also county personnel would stress again the need to present factual information when making statements about the Stafford Hamlet, and to be sure that the information is not only factual but transparent, and as well as actual, is going to help benefit moving our process along. And just to be sure to verify the information contributed by outside sources and groups before making judgments on the process. We have done a heck of a lot of work in a, in a short period of time. You look back at when this whole thing started, and probably in the last six or seven months, we've made a quantum leap from the first, we've done so much amount of work in the last seven months compared to what has happened since the hamlet began. And in those things, remand happened. Numerous other situations came up as we were going through. And, and now, we were, started our community vision plan, and we started a task force, which we had six stakeholders from the Hamlet Board. We've had six stakeholders from, actually, the Borland Neighborhood Association, Conservation Advocates, the Stafford Land Administration, plus concerned citizens, we're all welcomed, and they have done a marvelous job. One of the, the bigger packet you have up there is the summary of our community vision plan, and also the outline of what's going to happen. And I know there were some concerns about what do you really want out there and how are you going to go about it. I think that will help you make some decisions on, on where we're going with that. I think that, other couple of things that I just want to be sure we got into, we brought up the vote. If you look in your hand or in your packet, there's a small, unfoldable, that's the ballot. And then there's a, on the backside, or one of the other sheets you have is the bylaws. There's been a lot of information going back and forth about what the, what is a double majority vote, or what isn't. Well, it'll explain that to you in there. And it was a seven to one vote by our board, our board, to move it forward. Part of that was what do we want to do? Yeah, two choices. One being, we want all in the urban reserves. Or the second one would be that it's going to be, the employment land in the Borland area would be urban reserve and the rest would be undesignedated, hoping that we could get the county to do some upzoning to take care of those other things. So we have a boycott going on by some of the larger landowners, and we're trying to deal with that. We threw them a olive branch, the first one where we went to ballot plus, where we put the informational piece on the bottom of that. That didn't seem to help. It helped a little bit, but no, it wasn't good enough. So then we said there was a double majority or single. Well, in our bylaws, the only double majority vote that has to happen is for our CVP plan. So we said, okay, we're going to do the vote and get the county. The biggest thing is get you the information you need. And that's what individual property owners want and how they're going to go about doing it. So we put that on the table. Wasn't good enough, so they're currently still having a, and on the back of one of those letters there is their latest response to that. So, and the last thing I want to say is just that, once again, be sure that we're talking the factual information and that you work with us on the plan, because we've worked closely. And I want to thank the county staff. They've been great in answering our questions. And I know we put them in some hard positions as we go through. And I know Carol and Dave are going to talk about the Stafford Hamlet too. So I don't know if you have questions you want to hold to the very end or...
I have a quick question, but I'm going to go to Commissioner Bernard first.
So is this going to each household?
Yes.
Okay. My issue, first thing, you guys work harder than anybody else. I just, I think it's a very complicated issue. Somebody who doesn't understand rural reserves, undesignedated, and urban reserves without a lot of meetings wouldn't under, might not quite understand what that means. And I don't know how you get past that. We struggle with that. I mean, really, for rural reserves, 50 years before you can ever do anything is probably about all you need to tell people.
And that's why it's not on our ballot.
Pardon?
And that's why that is not on our ballot.
Yeah, I mean, it is huge. But the most important thing is it's advisory. And we're going to take it as that and do what's best for Clackamas County and do what's best, you know, for the folks who have to live, work, and play in that area. So I appreciate your efforts. And whether people vote or not, we'll know that. And that will help us, you know, in our level of determining how advisory it really is. So I appreciate your efforts. And like I said, you guys do an outstanding job. And the meetings and the depth of your meetings are far beyond most other CPOs, hamlets, or villages. So thank you for your work.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Savas?
Well, I want to, you know, echo some of Commissioner Bernard's comments. You guys are doing a lot of hard work. And I think that the product you guys put out in 2010, I believe the community vision and values product, I think was great. And I think that was a great beginning, and you've been building on it ever since. I've been active, active in a CPO since 1997. And I've been a commissioner for three and a half years. And I am still learning today about the complicated stuff, on what the consequences designations mean, let alone the zoning, underlying zoning that it ultimately becomes. And so I would, I would easily bet that a number of those people probably don't understand that level or have the information of that level that may or may not affect their property or what they really want. So my concern is just that. And I'm still, again, I'm still learning some of the, for example, if I knew that, let's say I wanted to sell my property, and I knew that my designation, if it was to become an urban reserve, would be of what value? So if it was a zone industrial, it would have one value potentially. If it was going to be zoned residential, it'd have a different value. A zoned commercial would have another. Or if it was zoned a certain way, I'd have limitations on my property. Though I think those are the real things that probably affect those folks. And so the comprehensive plan, which would be forthcoming somewhere in the future when it comes in, and what is probably the more practical things to try to determine. And I think, you know, I want to know what everyone wants, wants their neighborhood to look like. And the community vision and values product you guys did initially is a good start. We did that in McLaughlin. I was part of the first part of, you probably heard in the earlier testimony. But to me, I want to know what you guys want to aspire to be. And each property owner, whether it's each property owner or the 10 areas, knowing what those folks want to be in their area, that's value. I think you guys have done that. We kind of know what the community, those 10 different divided communities of Borland, Stafford, want to be. Those are the kinds of things that are helpful. But just that ultimate or final or consequence in the sense of zoning or infrastructure or cost, if it were to develop it, what does that mean in cost? There's just a lot of unanswered questions. And I think that if I was to receive this, I probably want to know much more.
And that's why we're holding the town halls. That's why we've held forums that you've all spoke at. You've been into, you've been at...
I've gone to a lot of your meetings, absolutely.
And the county staff has been a great job. And until you have a hot button and people are going to come out, we had a meeting on Monday night where we had probably 45 to 50 people there. So the education piece for us is big, and the county's been great of working with us. And that short timetable of, we need something by the end of October. That put the, you know, we had to put the pedal to the metal, and we have had a great, you know, turnout. And yes, everybody's happy.
You didn't interrupt what was going on here. I appreciate that, and I'm on, I get all the emails, and there is a great organization behind this. And it's been going on for a long time. This is not a, you know, a little drop in the puddle. Now, what I don't understand is on this ballot, it says, check which designation you would like to see on your property and check only one. Then it says appropriately, blank rural reserve, blank undesignedated, blank urban reserve. But then it says area blank, number of acres blank, currently zoned as blank, and under five or over five acres.
We want them to fill that in. So we know that they are a five or above acre. And once again, that's a draft, that isn't the final.
The choices are rural reserve, undesignedated, or urban reserve.
Yes, and the only we put the rural on there is because there are three options in state law that you can get that evidently at one point in time, it looked like that area was going to be rural, and then things happened, and...
So the remainder, let me give you to my point here.
Yes.
The remainder of it after those three, rural reserve, undesignedated, urban reserve, is for the person who's voting to fill in about their particular property. All I'm saying is that it'd be good to mention that. And I know you have the workshops, which is very good, you know. I mean, and plus, you'll probably have people there, again, explaining the ballot as they vote. But they have to show up to vote, is that, am I right, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. But you still mail that to everybody so they know what it says.
And you'll see things in the paper, you'll see news articles, you're going to see, we've got another mailing that's going to come out, so...
Did you mail this? I hope you didn't.
Not yet. Oh, no, that, no. We don't do the mail-out ballots.
Needs a little explanation on that.
Well, yeah. And like I said, that was just something that we had to get out and get here to say, yes, here's where we're going. And then there's got to be, you know, some tweaking on it. But that's where, because as you know, we're all volunteers and we don't do this stuff.
Yes, you are. And you've done a fabulous job over a long period of time. And this doesn't mean they haven't fought other fights, if you know what I mean, in that area fairly recently as well.
Very much so.
But thank you, Rick. Appreciate you coming tonight. Next two people, Mr. Dave Adams, Carol Yamada, followed by Les Poole, Thelma Huggenmiller. Carol?
Hello. Shall I start?
Sure.
I'm Carol Yamada. I live on Child's Road in the Stafford Hamlet. I was the first chair of the Stafford Hamlet. My mentor was John Ludlow.
Oh, yeah.
I'm currently on the board. And I'm here because I was listening to the tape of your meeting on Thursday. And an issue came up about the neighborhoods that I think I'd like to address, because we did discuss how should we vote? And it was not come up with lightly. The first thing, if you've lived in a rural area, you have neighbors, but you don't have neighborhoods. None of us live there because we want to be in a neighborhood. And so the neighborhoods came up during our vision and value planning. Somebody just took a pencil and drew areas like bubbles on the map for the purpose of having neighborhood meetings and gathering information for the vision and value plan. They're not emotionally connected neighborhoods. We don't have Christmas parties. We have three built-out neighborhoods that are probably closer than the rest of us. But some of us don't even see our neighbors' houses. So we don't have neighborhood aspirations. And I was looking at our survey this evening before I came. And we have it by neighborhood. And you wouldn't really want those results, because they'd be so mixed up. What would you do with them? It's like, okay, three neighborhoods, they're built out, they don't want to come in the UGB. The rest of the neighborhoods are about 50/50, or 60/40, or something like that, because there's pockets of people that would like to develop and then expanses of people who don't want to develop. So we chose not to develop, not to vote by neighborhoods, because we wanted to give you the most useful information. And we were told to keep it simple. And to have 10 little tiny disputed election results would not be simple. And also, there's a lot of assumptions in what people want. We had 300 people maybe answer the survey. But more people, like in my neighborhood, only 25% of the people responded to the survey or came to the meeting. So there's a lot of assumptions going on about what neighborhoods want and what the hamlet wants. And that's why we wanted to have a vote, so that we could actually be dealing with real information. And that's what I wanted to speak on.
All right, thank you, Carol. Mr. Adams?
Good evening. Chair Ludlow, commissioners. I too had an opportunity to listen to the brief conversation you had this week about events in Stafford. And I was sort of shocked and dismayed, actually, to hear Commissioner Savas's comments. And he and I actually had an opportunity to discuss this briefly earlier. But I was shocked, because in all of his issues, there wasn't anything that was actually correct or relevant to where we're at right now in the middle of the process. And to pick up a thread on some of Rick Cook's comments about information and truthful information, when I understood that his remarks, he sort of prefaced it by saying, well, when I was at the table at the Clackamas County Business Alliance the other day, I heard, you know, this is what I heard, and I have all of these issues. And since, honestly, none of those issues are relevant or correct. So I realized that there's a whole campaign to spread misinformation about what we're actually trying to accomplish out there. And, I mean, obviously, in three minutes, I don't have an opportunity to address each of the things that Commissioner Savas brought up. And so there's a whole nother issue of accessibility. You know, we get three minutes, you attend those meetings, I don't know.
You can write us, Dave, and you've written before.
Yeah, yeah. So, but anyways, there seems to be, one area of major concern or misinformation is trying to tease away the concept plan, the community plan that we were beginning to work on and the process we're in right now. And there was a shift that the board realized they had to make when the remand came down. And there sort of was a paradigm shift when that occurred. There, we were building a process to address a concept plan, and all of those conversations occurred under the umbrella of urban, right? So when the remand came down, it sort of became apparent, there may be a paradigm shift here. So we need to, you said how important it is to share information and discover information. The board realized and asked for the county's help. The county was very willing to come out. Three of you came out to sort of share what you knew about the remand. Dan Chandler's been very helpful to us as well to try to put together some information so that we can actually proceed now in what may or may not be a new paradigm. But we have not abandoned the community planning process. There is nothing, there is nothing planned that is going to be a vote of neighborhood against neighborhood. This is another rumor that's going around. We are talking about sharing information with our community about urban reserves and rural reserves. As you know, it's a very complicated thing. So we've got two meetings to try to share information. The vote is intended then to sort of get back from the community, their response to the information we've shared with them, so that we can proceed then into what may or may not be a new paradigm.
Fair enough. Commissioner Savas?
So, you know, we do hear a lot of things, and we don't know whether they're, you know, accurate or inaccurate, and nor do we advertise those. But in a work session, I think you were there earlier, but I didn't know that was pulled from the agenda. So I was trying to understand what's going on. And, but I will say that, just for clarification, if there's any confusion, that this map, which is basically a map of a majority of Clackamas County, was really the topic. And Borland, Stafford was just a minute little piece of that. So it was not a session that was, I want to make sure there's no misperception, that that was somehow designed and majority of that time spent. Frankly, most of the time was spent about talking about some of the employment lands and challenges that are out in East County. So just for a clarification, as far as what that context was. And there are people around the table that did make comments. And the purpose of getting that clarification was getting that clarification as to what that was and understanding it. And as I think you know, three of us were there. But the topic in Borland, Stafford was not on the agenda, but it did come up.
Commissioner Bernard?
I guess I'd just like to say that I've been in numerous meetings. And there's one thing you can say about Stafford, it's a very unique place. It's a unique opportunity for Clackamas County, and it should be treated as such. I mean, it's not all, everything fits Stafford. It fits here, it fits there, it doesn't there. So there's a great opportunity. And I've been to meetings about, you know, how various property owners or neighborhoods envision the future of Stafford. And I think that for advocacy purposes, Clackamas County should always advocate that Stafford should be different, should be treated somewhat different than what might be a metro vision of so many households per acre. It, because of its uniqueness, rivers, wildlife, it has to be different. And I think that you will hear in the future, whatever we hear from you guys and from all the other people who may not be involved so much, we have to do something different and unique. And I think you'll find a commitment on the part of all of us to look at Stafford in another way. I guess if you think back to Wilsonville, Wilsonville had a really unique opportunity to start from scratch. I was born and raised in a city that's already done. But Stafford is, they're starting from scratch. So there's a great opportunity, and we, and the people who live there need to take advantage of that. And my intention is to work hard to make sure that what's best, not only for the people who live there, but for Clackamas County and for employment land, since we have so little of it that has access to transportation. So I look forward to the discussion and to hearing from the community what they envision. But again, these are, these are very complicated issues. And like Paul says, we're learning every day what these mean. And not only do what they mean to various areas, but what they mean to the county as a whole. So anyway, thank you for your hard work.
Commissioner Schrader?
So I remember when I was here the first time, I was a proponent of the hamlet for this very reason. So folks, as things moved forward and things changed and paradigms shifted, that we knew that you would have an opportunity to comment and kind of really organize in a way so as things move forward, you were part of the conversation and the planning process. My question is this, with the remand, are you seeing this as an opportunity, as a way to take the temperature of the community to see if they really do want to be urban or rural reserve? Or just to give us a... or rural reserve, or just to give us a notion that what, I mean, what's the purpose of the, and it's an advisory vote, which, and it seems as if it's been very thought out, but what's the outcome that you may be expecting from this, Dave?
Well, thank you for that question. I mean, I'm, I don't have a prescribed outcome, but I think you all understand Stafford's been in and out of the urban reserve three times now, and I think you all understand that year after year, poll after poll, citizens in Lake Oswego, West Lynn, Toowallatin, and Stafford, large majorities want to see the rural character preserved. So, we, those of us that have been involved in this for years and years and years, understand that any, we're acutely aware that any plan that we want to put on the table, for it to succeed, has to have buy-in from the cities around us. We are also acutely aware that the county needs employment land. And as you know, in our vision and value statement, it was one of the first big agreements that we made. We all agreed that land
You're gonna have to shorten the question.
South of the river, that land south of the river made the mark, you know? We agreed that's employment land. So, we're acutely aware that we need to put something on the table that can help solve a regional problem that's been a problem for a long time, and that's what the majority of us are focusing on doing, is getting the community educated, involved, so that we can help you, and you can help us solve a problem.
Commissioner Bernard.
I just wondered, Cabela's opened today, and I avoided that area, but I bet you it had an impact on Stafford today. I bet it did. And it, and one of the big complaints about the Stafford being an urban community was traffic impact. And then they built Cabela's with no traffic improvements, and did, I don't know who had an opportunity to go through to it, but man, that has to have a huge impact on Stafford.
I was there the night before they opened, because my son has a VIP status, and it was plenty busy then. I can't even imagine what it was today. Commissioner Savis?
Just a reminder, just, and want to say that there was a 2010 commission prior to my being here, but that's not really the point, but the 2010 commission that adopted the urban reserves, you know, and complying with a Senate Bill 1011, which basically required those urban reserve designations. And that was a, not a Clackamas County decision solely, but it was a regional decision, meaning that Washington County had to agree, Metro had to agree, Multnomah County had to agree. So, it's not solely our decision by any means to signify what that is. And there's also a mathematical requirement, a computation of how many acres are urban, how many urban reserves, employment land, so forth. So, and those are broken down, frankly, as I understand it, in industrial, commercial, and housing. So, that decision was made four years ago.
I'm aware of that. I was part of that process, so thank you.
Let me just mention Wilsonville while we're at it. I have been there for well over 40 years and was participatory in their first general plan in 1974. We did have visions in Wilsonville, but we were shackled by LCDC, who said, to really to be good partners with Metro, but prior to Metro's arrival, that we needed to have 50% multifamily. Now, Wilsonville now has 56% multifamily housing. So, it is good to be cautious about the plan, especially when Metro, their edict is, as new UGB areas are brought in for residential, the minimum, they say, shall be eight units per acre. And when you think of 43,560 square feet divided by eight, you say, "Well, that's not so bad. It's a 5,000-square-foot lot." Well, as a real estate broker, I will tell you, it ain't that. Because when I was selling lots, in my, start of my career in real estate, we used to laugh at 5,000-square-foot lots. Now, they are premium. Ask for them in Villeboise, and you'll find out that they are premium lots. So, you know, when you're thinking about 5,000 square feet, i.e. eight units per acre, that's, doesn't count roadways. So, by the time you get to eight units per acre and take out the roadways involved, you've got postage stamps. And I don't want to see the character of Stafford area or any other area continue to suffer because of Metro edicts as to how their vision would be. Here, they just came out with their housing preference survey. 80% of the people they surveyed said, "We want single-family homes." But will they react to that? Yes, they'll probably dismiss it. Now, Les Poole and Mariana Moore followed batting cleanup Thelma Hagen-Miller. I put you last on purpose.
Thank you.
Bet cleanup for us. All right. Either one of you, please.
Never been here before, so I'm nervous. Work with me. Les Poole, Clackamas County. Mr. Bernard, I agree 100% with what you said about our good friends at Metro. This is a first. The, Stafford is the next Damascus, if we're not careful. Stafford is the next Damascus. And Chair Ludlow, I'm disappointed you didn't bring up the fact that we can't do anything out there, or not much, until we three-lane that freeway. We gotta do that, too, so we've got some big challenges out there. One of the reasons the process is so complex, and Commissioner Savis alluded to it, Metro has too much control of you folks, so let's return some local control to you people. You can work with Washington and Multnomah County and not have a cumbersome layer of government in your way. You're gonna hear from Thelma this evening about an issue that really troubles me, and I think we brought it to a boil, a boil was a tragic automobile accident recently, but I've been photographing the construction and the history at Park Avenue since day one because for five years, five years, people looked at me like, "Oh, I was just trying to stop light rail." People looked at me like I had a problem with Trimet, and maybe I didn't have a life, and I wanted to just come down here and listen to myself talk. Well, year after year after year, I explained that clear back in 2004, when the light rail was going to end in downtown Milwaukee, and we started playing games trying to put the end of the line elsewhere, including the insanity that went, that took place at Cullag Lake, which is pathetic of a place to end the line as Park Avenue was. There was never an adequate land use process. There was never, like there was for every other jurisdiction, nothing was done up front. And I was involved at the Elks Club as an Elks member, and the process that they experienced and the abuse that they have received, and this last-minute hokey ridiculous design they came up with, is an affront to the community. And boy, does our trolley trail look good. And now, we've got a little piece of paper here that says, "We're gonna have a meeting with Trimet." Or, the people that perpetrated this insanity, we're gonna meet with Trimet, and what are they gonna do? They're gonna give Thelma a back rub? I am appalled. And I'm not gonna talk past my three minutes because I need about another 10, so I'll save it. And I promise you, I'm gonna submit some written information tomorrow that I hope the county acts on. It's time the county acted and responded with firm conviction to some of the things that Trimet and Metro are doing or have done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mariana.
Yes, Mariana Moore from Gladstone. I've been here before a number of times, too, and partly because I've been around here for so long, 75 years now, since I've been within, lived within five miles of Milwaukee, where we moved when I was four. And we had the property on Harrison Street that went right behind Mikes and followed the railroad down, railroad right away. So, I was used to hearing the trains, we loved the trains. I would walk down to Milwaukee, we all walked in those days, we didn't all have cars, and would take the streetcar, and it was a wonderful invention, too. So, but it was depression time, and we had the people coming off of the trains, and I think it's kind of similar to what happens at the end of the light rail lines now. So, there's all kinds of connections. And one of the things I had, was affected by progress, too, because when the Milwaukee Expressway came in, it took out our house, and my folks moved up the hill. So, it was about four miles from there to where I was in Gladstone by then. And so, there's lots of traveling back and forth between Milwaukee and Gladstone, and often on Oatfield Road. And so, I've been looking at this all along, and when they first presented this, I think it was the first big meeting they had at Milwaukee High School, and they came out with a nice printed book. The cover has this wonderful view of walking on the trail with the trees, right where they're doing this now. And you say it was all planned and approved, but the plan keeps changing over time. It changes a lot. And right now, Oatfield Road is the center of what they're tearing up. It is just horrible. I know Paul's around, but the other three of you, I would hope come and take a look at what they're doing along there. They have cut back to where they're closer than I am to you, to people's houses. They're probably buying them out, but whatever they're doing, they're really destroying the whole area around there. And they're gonna put in the stoplight there at Park Avenue. I also had connections with that and the Elks. And like I say, they, you say they've had approval for all of this, but it's evolved in a way that it was not intended at the beginning. And one of the other things from Milwaukee is everybody learned to swim in the cold pool next to the junior high. At this point, Clackamas County is really short on swimming pools, and the Elks Lodge has a swimming pool back there in the back, where they certainly could benefit, the whole city can benefit, from reaching that pool, from the lower, the back entrance to the lodge. And so, I want to support what Thelma's saying, to get different access in there, because I think it's an asset for the whole community. Thank you very much.
I will note, there was a very recent change order on that intersection of Oatfield and Park.
Oh, it's terrible.
That it's now going to be fully signalized, as rightfully it should have been from the beginning now. I note that because that can be changed, so the question is, can anything else be changed at this late hour?
Sure. They've been changing it ever since they started.
Commissioner Bernard.
I just want to say I never swam in Milwaukee junior high pool. I learned to swim at the Elks.
Good for you. You're younger.
Yeah, you're a young guy, Jim. All right, thank you, Mariana. And now, it is the Thelma Hagen-Miller Show.
Three-minute show.
Three minutes, short show.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow and commissioners. My name is Thelma Hagen-Miller, and I am a resident of Clackamas County, live in unincorporated Oak Grove. I sent you today a copy of the testimony that I intended to give this evening. However, at 5:01 this evening, I received this little piece of paper here that gave me your answer to my testimony. So, I'm not going to read my testimony. I'm going to come from an emotional passion situation. I was not going to bring this into the conversation tonight, but I'm going to now because of this paper. And I'm gonna let you know what's going on out there, and all of the rest of the people in TV land know what's going on out there. Two and a half years ago, I protested at the Elks meeting when I first learned that the access road coming in off of Park Avenue to the back end of their property was going to be done away with. Well, that fell on deaf ears because our negotiators were negotiating with what you yourselves have often referred to as the guerrillas in the state here, ODOT and Trimet. And those guerrillas have, came to the meetings with our Elks negotiators with the threat of condemnation. That's what we as members heard at all the meetings. Well, we're under the threat of condemnation. If we don't go along with what they want, they'll just condemn the property and take it anyhow. They also came with carrots, money carrots. And Elks, as you, some of you know, needed some money, okay? So, those two things, but I still protested, got, fell on deaf ears there and everything, so it came time for design review. Two of us went to design review. I went to Mike McAllister, your planning director, prior to design review, about the vacation of 27th Place, and said, "This shouldn't happen. We need that back access. We need a second access for safety issues." Safety, that's why I'm here tonight. Safety, okay? So, on the 1st of July of this year, I almost, as I told Martha, was right in the middle of a sandwich accident, would have gone just like that. I wouldn't be here tonight, lucky you. Luckily, by the hair of somebody's chinny-chin-chin, I escaped that accident. It didn't actually happen. It would have been four or five cars, so count up the number of people involved, okay? I immediately, the next morning, sent emails to Trimet and ODOT about the unsafe situation that I experienced the night before. And this was not after dark, it was at 5:00 at night, okay? Well, they supposedly took care of a whole situation, and not to my satisfaction, but on September 3rd, at 10:45 at night, two people were leaving the Elks, and they were turning left. There was not a left, no left turn sign at that time. They were turning left, stupid, and they agree. But they did it and got creamed, and they hauled three people away in ambulances that night. Now, that's the first that I'm aware of. I have received all kinds of emails from other people saying, "I just barely missed being caught in an accident or being involved in an accident." So, safety is the number-one issue with MAPIT, with MABA, the McLaughlin Area Business Alliance. It's the number-one issue on ODOT's program. Go read their mission statement, okay? And this design of closing the access to Park Avenue from the back of that lodge property, which gets a lot of people who come there for events that don't even know where they're going, closing that is just asinine. So, I'm asking that a meeting be convened to talk about what can be done, because it can be done now easily, affordably, and successfully before the guerrillas walk away from the project. Then it becomes your problem, and the safety issue stays.
It was a five-and-a-half-minute Thelma today, but it was a good delivery. Now, it is probably the wish of this commission, Mr. Krupp, that Mr. Besner become involved, our engineer, become involved in this and ascertain with, in conjunction with ODOT and Trimet, whether this will be a safe access egress after the job is done. I think that is a big conjecture right now, and I realize that Mr. Story, our temporary legal counsel here tonight only
But I'm not picking on him tonight. Remember, I told you that.
No, he's just reciting what the rule is or where we're at currently. But I think it, I would bet that there's a wish here that we have our engineer look into this as legitimate concerns, and, you know, certainly a meeting is necessary between the parties. And I was emphasized that, I appreciate that, I saw the correspondence from Trimet, that we're involving ourselves with the Elks, but I was close by during those negotiations when they got their, quote, "conservation easement," end quote, and really fought over that access. I'm an Elk member, and that west access I've already mentioned was paramount to the safe access and egress to that property, other than a very dangerous one on McLaughlin. It's always been dangerous, folks, but it is not going to be better because of this new traffic, let alone the configuration. So, I would ask Mr. Krupp to, at least, an informational session. I do believe we have some Tuesday afternoon time where we could sandwich that in, possibly during your issues or nearby to your issues. during your issues or nearby to your issues? So I'd ask you to do that, because I think the commission wants to know that this is safe. And the perfect proof is that they can always change things, is, like I say, they have changed things. I just got the notice that, again, it's full signalization, and that's great, although the right-of-way is not so great. But there's changes already being made voluntarily by these entities, and maybe we can encourage them to do more. Commissioner Schrader?
I just wanted to say, Chair, I haven't shared this yet, but I did sit with Thelma, who actually gave me a diagram of what the situation is. I actually have it in my bag. And if we can have a discussion with it, I'll bring it to that meeting. I am concerned about the safety issues. And evidently, Thelma, you're reading the letter that is marked September. I just saw this this afternoon myself. And is your concern that TRIMET's going to convene a meeting and that it's just going to be not going anywhere? Because I'm looking at the first, second, third, the fifth paragraph. We understand the representatives. And then you came tonight with a yellow sheet.
Came tonight with a sheet that I got at 5:01 from you guys.
Okay. So it came with this letter that we--
That letter was prior to this. The letter from ODOT, Joseph Off, the engineer, is the person on that letter. He's the one that okayed the design and said that the Elks agreed, and everybody else agreed, and it's going to stay that way, et cetera, et cetera.
I do remember the threat of condemnation during that particular time, too. And that's very big. The Elks didn't have money to be able to take on attorneys. When Big Brother says, "We're going to take it whether you like it or not," you pay close attention. And I know that the Elks did a fairly good job negotiating, but again, as a real estate broker, I would have been a little more hard-line, because the threat is a threat, but to deliver it is a little tougher.
And please, everybody out there in the world, I'm not here representing the Elks.
I know that.
I'm here representing the safety of this issue. And the other thing that Mr. Off didn't enhance in his statement, but that is in the design, is that there is a new road right beside the Elks Road, or our driveway, that is coming from the third level of the parking garage. So it's adding, the design is adding another road onto McLaughlin, and still not giving us any other access points. So they're making it even more traffic that you have to be watching out for.
Well done, Thelma. And so I expect that we'll add this to our agenda item on Tuesday. And of course, you're welcome to attend, but probably not participate. We're going to hear from the engineers, and we're going to hear from the parties involved. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, I was just going to say, the Administrator's Policy Session is scheduled for 2:30 on Tuesday afternoon, and we'll get this item on the list. We'll schedule it so it's the first item on the list, so people--
That'll be helpful. So anybody listening that's interested in this, first item on the list, 2:30 this coming Tuesday.
And thank you all very much for your patience with me and your concerns that I share. I know you share them, too.
Sure. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we've come to another portion of our agenda. We will have a board discussion item. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I can't tell you how pleased I am to have this item presented to you tonight. I'm going to invite Mr. Dan Chandler, our Strategic Policy Administrator, to come up and give you a presentation of Performance Clackamas. This is the Clackamas County Strategic Plan. So, Mr. Chandler?
Good evening. I'm here to present, as Mr. Krupp said, Performance Clackamas, the Clackamas County Strategic Plan. I want to first talk a little bit about, you know, how we got here. You go back fourteen, sixteen years, and you can see that every, oh, three, four, five, six years, the county will adopt another business plan, strategic plan, economic development plan. And you'll notice that they are all very similar. Very similar visions for what the county should look like, and yet, every few years, we sort of go back and reinvent that. But they're all important, and in every case, each of these plans contained a series of actions that the county intended to do to help achieve those goals. But they were aimed at things that the county did, and it became difficult to sort of measure the effect of those things in the community, and tell whether or not we were thriving as a great place to operate a business or not. And they were difficult to track over time. So over the last couple of years, and really coming to a focus about a year ago, the Board of Commissioners expressed an interest in a newer, updated plan, and one that focused more on outcomes or results. So we began to look around the country, and we looked for plans and processes. We looked for three things. We looked for plans and processes that had longevity, where jurisdictions had done this and were continuing to do it five, 10, or 15 years down the road. We took that as a signal that whatever they were doing was working for them. We looked for jurisdictions where their strategic planning efforts and management styles were helping them move the needle in terms of citizen satisfaction. And both of those really led us to look for plans that focused on measurable results for customers. I think most plans tend to focus on what we do. We will meet this many people. We will issue these many permits. We will do those things. And they don't tend to focus on the outcomes or the results that are experienced by the citizens. So about a year ago, I guess it was in December of last year, the Board authorized us to go ahead and issue a request for proposals. We did a national RFP search. And this is language from the RFP. It says, "Assist the county in becoming a government which increasingly plans, focuses, and manages strategically. Creates customer-oriented, outcomes-based performance measurement. implements data-driven service methods. Streamlines county governments. Generates and captures cost savings and creates a concrete vision that would survive changes in governance." It was a tall order. We selected a contractor called Managing Results LLC, who proposed using what's called the managing-for results method, or managing-for results paradigm. This came out of the private sector in the late '60s, and was adopted in Fortune 500 companies, and has slowly penetrated the government sector. Managing for results really means, it means two things. It's a management system that focuses people, resources, and organizations on results for customers. And who the customer is varies from activity to activity. We may have internal customers as we relate to each other, but it helps us focus on why all of us do what we do. And we do things so that our customers and our clients and our citizens can experience results. So it's a relentless focus on the customer. And it's also an organizational culture where that happens as well. Peter Drucker, the fellow who invented managing-for results, invented the phrase, said, "Culture eats strategy for breakfast." So managing-for results is also a culture where your language and your beliefs and behaviors are focused on results for customers as well. Having selected that, pardon me, having selected that contractor and that consultant, we started into the process of the Board's Strategic Plan. We asked citizens through an annual survey, a website, and a couple of town hall meetings the following question. What are the most important issues the residents of Clackamas County and the county government will be facing over the next two to five years? And there was a wide range of responses, but they tended to cluster around four or five key areas that our citizens felt were most important. We also asked you all, the commission, what results you want to be able to say have been accomplished two to five years from now. With that, that framed up a two-day retreat that you all had, March 31st and April 1st. We discovered there was a really high level of alignment between you all as commissioners on what were the key policy issues for the county. We followed that up with discussion of the goals and refinements with the departments and the community as well, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Out of that retreat, the Board adopted a set of 28 strategic goals under five strategic priority areas. And I'm going to go through them fairly quickly, but they're, "Grow a vibrant economy, build a strong infrastructure, ensure safe, healthy, and secure communities, honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources, and build trust through good government." So under these areas of focus, as I said, the Board approved 28 strategic goals. Each of those goals is time-limited, specific, and to the extent possible, they're all focused on things that the community will experience as a result of our efforts. Grow a vibrant economy was the first strategic priority area. And you'll notice here that these are all, and I'm not going to go through them individually, there are too many, but you'll notice here that these are all things that the county can influence. They may not all be things that we can control, but we also believe these are all things that if we have focused efforts and things turn out the right way, that these are things that we can achieve in the next four or five years. And the importance of this is obvious. It's good-paying jobs. It helps people support families. It's affordable housing. It's growing businesses. It's making employment land available for new businesses. The next area of strategic priority was build a strong infrastructure. Here, again, there are a number of goals. And again, you'll see that they are all specific, and they're time-limited. They're certain, we're going to accomplish these things by these particular dates. And again, infrastructure is key to growing businesses. Having a plan for county facilities is key for our citizens to be able to come in and access our services. We have a plan for making sure that we have a plan for sewer improvements in place that will meet our 20-year growth needs. Again, they're all specific, and they're all time-limited, and they're all aimed at the results our citizens are going to experience. Safe, healthy, and secure communities. I've broken this into a couple of slides, but this is about the services that we provide to the public to keep them safe, healthy, and secure. It's our health clinics, it's law enforcement, it's the work we do for veterans. And again, each of these, there's a measurable goal and a measurable outcome, so we're all going to know by 2018, or 2020, or 2019, how we're doing. And we can have a conversation every year about how things are going, and figure out if there's a reason we're not meeting these goals. What's happened? How do we adjust things? How do we change? Do we need to change budget priorities? What do we do to meet these goals? Public safety, I want to talk about a little bit, because here, there was a number of discussion, a number of discussions, a lot of discussion with the departments about what were the appropriate measures for crime rates, property crime rates, and recidivism. I've got to say, it's one of the most rewarding things I've experienced as a county employee, was talking to department heads who are already among the leaders in the state and the region, who said, "You know what? We're already the best, but we think we can do even better." And a number of these measures, as we roll them out over time and explain to the community what they mean and how we relate to other jurisdictions, you're going to see that we are, we're already ahead of other folks, and we plan to get even better. This last one, the community rating system for flood safety, the result of that, if we get it done, will be a big reduction in flood insurance premiums for county residents. And again, these are each things that the community will experience. You notice, none of them are really things that we're going to do. These are things that we're going to achieve and that the community will experience, that our citizens will experience as a result of our efforts. Honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources. A significant portion of Clackamas County, most of the Clackamas County is in federal land. I don't know if today we'd add a bullet that said, "Keep the lands from burning up." In any event, you look at some of these, the $6 million annual figure would get the county back to the revenue the county used to get from timber production and county lands. That was the basis of that number. And finally, probably the most important of all, was build public trust through good government. This is really where the rubber meets the road. This is how do we accomplish these things? And how do we accomplish other things for our citizens? You'll see here, the first bullet is going to say, "All commission-managed departments will have completed customer-focused, outcome-based strategic business plans to include customer service and satisfaction measures by 2017." That means over the next three fiscal years, virtually all county departments will have gone through this planning process I'm going to describe in a minute. By 2018, 100% of the county budget will be attached to measurable customer results." It's a very clear statement from the governing body that money's going to follow results, and money's going to follow outcomes. Next steps. After the Board adopts this plan, assuming that they do, the whole county will go through this departmental business planning process. Again, the Board's goal is that MFR be adopted county-wide in the next three years. We would note that the independently elected officials who each run departments, the sheriff, the district attorney, the clerk, the assessor, and the treasurer, will each determine how this approach will fit in their department and their existing strategic planning efforts over time. I would note, the assessor will be one of the first departments, however, to go through. Our assessor of Roman has chosen to go ahead and be among the leaders in implementing MFR. We're also, we'll be adopting in the next couple of weeks, a software program, or software as a service program, that will provide dashboards. So the public will be able to tell in close to real time how we're doing. You'll be able to go onto the county website and look at a dashboard, or a graph, or a scale that's going to say, "Here's the goal. Here's how we're doing. Here's how other jurisdictions are doing as well." I think that's going to be a tremendous help for transparency and accountability for all of us here at the county. Talk a little bit more about this departmental business planning process. The use of the word "business plan" is really deliberate. It says we're going to manage ourselves in some ways more like a business, even though we're not operating for a profit. All departments are going to use a consistent methodology and terminology, you know, and by itself, that's a big deal, but we've got to recognize the consistent methodology, and the consistent terminology is, "We do what we do for customers. We do what we do so customers can experience things." And every department will have its own mission statement and its own set of strategic goals to help the Board implement these things. I mean, there's no way any one document can encompass what 1,800 employees are going to do. So every department's going to have its own plan, and every program will have its own piece of the plan. And by program, I mean, say, the four or five people involved in electrical permits are going to get together and say, "What's your program purpose? What are your performance measures?" Again, couched in terms of what the customer receives as a result of your efforts. And it's going to be measurable, and we're going to be accountable for it. So at the end of the day, I think there's three key things here. One, you know, this effort and this process is going to help us become more transparent, more open, more efficient. I think when choices have to be made, county managers, you as commissioners, and more importantly, the public is going to know what those choices are and what those choices mean in terms of what the community receives. And finally, the Board, and again, more importantly, the citizens are going to have a clearer idea over time of what they're getting for their precious tax dollars. So with that, staff urges your adoption of the resolution, adopting Performance Clackamas, the Clackamas County Strategic Plan. Thank you.
Any questions of the presenter commissioners? All right. I'll ask for a motion.
I move we adopt the resolution for Performance Clackamas, the Clackamas County Strategic Plan.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion?
Got one light on there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul?
I can't tell you how pleased I am to have this opportunity to actually get to the strategic plan. Mary's nodding her head up and down, because over the last three and a half years, I've been battling away, pounding away, trying to get a strategic plan underway. It's been a long road, and I know that there were times that we got off course, I felt, and I was trying to get us back on course. And, you know, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of work, and both from, you know, my level and the Board's level. But I want to thank each and every commissioner. I know Commissioner Smith's not here, but I want to thank Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Schrader, and Chair Ludlow for, you know, getting the strategic plan, or at least the goal-setting piece in place, a first step. And the Administrator as well, and Dan, your efforts in this area. Had we done this three years ago, we'd be three years farther ahead. We wouldn't be looking at 2020, 2019 dates. We'd be, you know, we'd be almost halfway there. And I can cite a number of dates and a number of issues where we, I believe we got off course, and I was trying to maintain and get us back on course. But here we are today, and I'm just proud and pleased to know. And I just, and I think, Dan, you said it, you alluded to it, this is really a first step. We've got a lot of work to do to develop this, and we, there's a lot of other processes that must take place, and we need to stick with this program and this work, and make sure, not only is it funded, but the Administrator and staff, you know, work hard to meet those deadlines and do what's necessary to make this a working product that will guide our future direction. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Dan Chandler for this, and the rest of us, and our county Administrator, Mary, and everyone who spent a lot of time on it. It was a very productive process, and I think managing-for results is the way to manage our budget process as well. I think that's going to be the key. Once we know what our priorities are and we have standards of measurement, it will really, I think, help inform where dollars go. And I see Mr. Kaiten in the audience still, and he is currently a part of our Budget Committee, and I hope he will continue to be a part of our Budget Committee. But I think that this document, as we move through each department, is going to clarify what we want, what we think the priorities are, and then we can move forward to efficiently be lean and attach dollar figures. And then we'll also have measurement standards if something isn't working. Then we'll know we either have to eliminate it, or we'll have to figure out another process to achieve that goal. to achieve that goal. So this is a risky thing, I think, for elected officials to do, because we are staking our, our trust, the public trust, that we can set high standards, and that working with our talented staff, that we can achieve them. So I'm very pleased with this process. I'm looking forward to it. I personally will work very hard to do whatever I can to help us achieve the results that we've outlined for ourselves.
You know, I too want to thank Mr. Chandler. You know, we spent several retreat days, this commission, coming up with our goals. And I'm proud to say that those goals were all agreed upon unanimously, in each case, by this commission. Now, some would say that's a rare and special day, that that would happen, but you'll be surprised how many times we agree on a great deal of things. We have a fantastic facilitator that continues to work for Clackamas County on this very important project, and we look forward, and I think the most important thing is, going back to Jeff Katon's Budget Committee membership, is, and one of the things you come out with when you have expected outcomes and measurability, is that it will affect budgeting, because if it, if those outcomes, or expected outcomes, are not achieved, there will be ramifications come budget time, because we're not going to be afraid to sunset things as they fail. So I just want to point that out. I think it's, again, fantastic, you know, the prior strategic plan, as Paul said, was just not workable. This is an outstanding one. So commissioners, if we have no further questions, I'll ask Mary to take the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. And so, we get to the consent agenda, so I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the Consent Agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, a board order approving the mental health director's designee to authorize a custody hold under ORS...
Thank you, Dan.
Let me, I'll put it up there for the audience, too. Under ORS 426233, approval of an agency service contract with Cascadia Behavioral Health Care for Supported Employment and Crisis Respite Services, approval of Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services, Office of Child Welfare Program for Alcohol and Drug Screenings and Case Management Services, approval of a renewal intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for the city's readiness initiative program, approval of an interagency, intra-agency agreement with Clackamas County Health Centers Behavioral Health Clinic and Supported Employment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division for the Prevent, Net Community School System Program. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, a board order for the, a board order for the abandonment of the legalization process for a portion of Megan Avenue, County Road Number 2581, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the right-of-way services for the East Barlow Trail Road at Milepost Six Project. Department of Emergency Management, approval of a cooperative agreement with Skyview Acres Water Company for the use of Clackamas County Emergency Notification System, and under elected official, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, any commissioner wish to remove any of the items on the consent agenda? I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second. Any further discussion necessary? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. It's time for the wonderful delivery of the county administrator update. I'm sure you're going to have some fascinating items for us today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, indeed I do. So, you know, earlier, we had the presentation from our emergency management director, Nancy Bush, about the 36-pit fire, and I just wanted to take a moment to talk about how, what she shared with you highlights the important role that our emergency management department plays in the case of natural disasters and emergencies in Clackamas County. That particular event is a real good showcase of the kind of collaboration that needs to happen among partners within county government to be able to respond, so in addition to our staff in emergency management, who put in a lot of extra hours late into the evening, I was getting emails as late as 11:00 p.m. at night from Ms. Bush about, and as many meetings, as many people attended, Nancy attended all of them, the community meetings that were out there, and up in the Estacada area. But in addition to emergency management, we also relied on the good help and skill and expertise of our public and governmental affairs staff, Tim Hyder in particular, with the public communications side of the work that we do, our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department being at the ready to be able to assist those families and households that were affected by the evacuations, our Parks Department played a role in enabling Barton Park to be available to those campers from Silver Fox Campground, which was the first area evacuated in the fire, enabling them to be able to find temporary camping for their situation. And then finally, the County Sheriff's Office, which was involved with traffic control, and also notification of homeowners of the pending evacuations in the area. So I would just wanted to thank those folks who played a role in being able to provide the kind of help and assistance to individuals who were affected by that. But with that in mind, because in addition to forest fires, there's a whole host of other things that we're involved in, in the area of emergency management, and Mary's going to bring up a quick flyer up on the, on the screen. In a week from this Saturday, we'll be a public open house for a flood of information. This is the third event of this type, where we'll provide an opportunity for property owners and residents to learn about how they can best be prepared for the winter along the Sandy River and the tributaries of the Sandy River, get a chance to learn from experts about what they can do to make winter living in the area safer for themselves. So I wanted to make that announcement. Next item I have, I'm going to have a little tough time keeping a straight face about this, if you'll...
There we go.
...for a moment. The Water Environment Services Department is going to begin a pilot project on Monday, and they're going to enlist the help of, not one, not two, but 40 goats, and I got to get this, one llama, 40 goats and one llama, to help clear a stormwater pond that's next to the Vern Duncan Elementary School in Happy Valley. And of course, Chair Ludlow, and our interim director for Water Environment Services, Mr. Michael Reed, and the owner of Goat Power, Brianna Murphy, will be at the all-school morning assembly to educate students about the goats and the district's role in protecting the environment. We're going to be evaluating how this particular pilot project works in future efforts in the, in the Service District. Now, if that doesn't get your goat, I don't know.
Oh, you had to do it, didn't you? Now, I might add, just as a correction, it starts tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
You said Monday.
Did it say Monday?
Yeah.
It's, it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, at 8:00 a.m. If you want to come down and watch the goats, the goats climb on you, but the llamas spit on you, so that's probably their protection, I assume.
That may be why we only have one llama.
One llama.
Yeah. Okay, so the other item I have, I don't know if you're aware of this, but county managers and supervisors are participating in a special training program. It's part of a study that is a collaboration between Portland State University and the Oregon Health and Science University. It's called SERVE, which is the Study for Employment Retention of Veterans, and the focus is to provide training that gives knowledge and skills in the area of veteran-supported supervisor training. It's a very neat thing. I actually went through the training today to get familiar with how it works. I think I may be the first one to get it all done and go through the training. But the, the whole purpose of the program is to figure out means and ways in which we can decrease veteran job strain, and increase veterans' psychological health and physical health, marital quality, job satisfaction, and ultimately, job retention. And so the study's going to test the effectiveness of this specific training that's being given, so that we can increase supervisor support for transitioning veterans following their deployment. So I'll keep you advised as how that goes, and as the results come in with that as well, as we learn how that works, so. I, oh, I've got another piece of interesting information to share with you, and this will be the last item that I do, but our, our budget committee meeting is, the first quarter is going to be in early October, and at that time, we'll present to the budget committee the latest five-year forecast for the coming fiscal year. And I just received those figures just this week from Mr. Mark Gonzalez, our Director of Finance. And what I can tell you about how we finished the last fiscal year, it really is going to help as we prepare for the coming fiscal year. We exceeded our estimated revenue projections by about $2 million in the general fund, but concomitant with that, we actually spent about $1 point million less than we projected for the end-of-year expenditures for the last fiscal year. So that has provided a substantial benefit to the current reserves that the county have, has entering into this current fiscal year. As good a news as that is, and what I will tell you this, is as you, as you look at expenditures and revenues over the course of this year, and then projected into what would be the following fiscal year, I'm still suggesting words of caution, and taking a very conservative outlook as we approach our spending plan for the county. It's good news to know that over the course of the next couple of years, we can expect to have a stable reserve in the county's general fund. And as we look out in the future, the, the financial plan for the next several years suggests that it will improve significantly, but that's only if we exercise due diligence and caution and care as we move forward. I wanted to share that with you. I'm looking forward to sharing this with the budget committee in their first quarter meeting.
And it's time for commissioners' communication. Might as well start with Commissioner Savis, his light is on.
Well, first of all, just to, to speak to the administrator's last comments, I just had asphalt on my mind, road repair on my mind. And I understand that staff, you know, said there's a return on investment, so I was wondering if we can't, you know, save some money by taking care of some of those more urgent needs on our roads, so I'd like to see some kind of analysis on that, but, and still, maybe take a conservative approach on, on, on those numbers with regards to reserves. Chair, we had a discussion on August 19th with regard to the act, and we had a follow-up discussion on Tuesday, and subsequent discussions we've had since, since this last Tuesday. To want to get clarification, I know there's been a little bit of confusion, and, and a little bit of perhaps misinformation. The, the Clackamas County members of the act met this morning, as I mentioned on Tuesday, the Clackamas County Corning Committee met. I think our objectives have been pretty clear up front, but I just wanted to get clarification that the Monday meeting, I'm only bringing this because of the Monday meeting that's coming up, but basically, the goal, our, all our goals, and I think our, I think that is of our county, my colleagues at the county here on the commission, that we position the county in the, as strongly and advantageously as possible on whichever one of these two options, whether it's a one-act option or a two-act option, that we position ourselves in a better way than we currently stand, but the best way possible, and bring that back to the commission at the, I believe we have a scheduled September 30th meeting for an update from staff, and I think that's what we propose to do, an update at the August 21st. But I know there was a little bit of confusion as to preference of one or two, and I think the way the wind's blowing, which I mentioned on August 21st, that we might have a chance to put us in the strongest position with a single act, because ODOT might be resisting. So if I could get maybe just a little bit of concurrence that we support trying to get the county in a strong position, and bring that back for board approval at the decision point.
Well, Commissioner Bernard wants to, you know, normally, it's the time for commissioners' communication, but it sounds like we're working towards a decision, or at least the identification of an issue. So Commissioner Bernard, you want to say something?
Actually, I think... Actually, I think part of the confusion is exactly what you just said. A one-act would be one where all of Clackamas County would be an act. And as the second act would be the metro folks.
Possibility, one of the possibilities.
As a possibility. The other is an act that is a superact, where there's equal representation among partners in the act. My concern with that one is that, you know, what is equal may not be so equal if it's Multnomah County, City of Portland, Port of Portland, all these Portland folks, and Clackamas County has one vote. So I, I mean, I think that's important, is that we're working for what's best for Clackamas County. That means, I got to vote, you got to vote, not, we're all voting against, you know, four of one, and two of one, and Clackamas County stands alone. And the full, the county-wide act, I think, has some, I mean, it's worth looking at. I don't really know how the, how money is distributed, but I believe that, that, that would be my concern. I mean, if the big pot, the big, big loud voices like Portland, who tend to get everything, and Clackamas County gets very little, I, we need to make sure that we have as much horsepower as those other folks do.
Just for clarification, so people know, an act is an area committee on transportation. Across the state, there are half a dozen or more, and for many years, Gliss County, long before my arrival, has been asking that our people who are not in the UGB boundaries of metro would have a right to representation. That means direct communication with, with the Oregon Transportation Committee. That is not possible unless we have an act. So last legislative session, they agreed to employ Oregon Solutions. Paul Savis is our official representative for Clackamas County on that group, and there are a varied amount of proposals before them, including the fact that, again, 110,000 people or more in our county are unrepresented. Hood River has a small sliver, Washington County has a small amount, and so does Multnomah County. However, we are by far the most unrepresented, and so the question that will come before us, brought to us by Commissioner Savis in the near future, is, is how, what kind of acts do we want? Do we want two, one, four, five? I don't know, how will that bone out? But it is, we are resolute to get representation for us directly with the Oregon Transportation Commission to tell about our needs. We should not be Portland-centric. We have 1,400 miles, it's been said before, of roadways, and some of them are deteriorating, but beyond that, we have the state involved in their roadways, too. So Commissioner Savis, to answer your question, we are very interested, as you have always purported, that we would have all of our citizens represented in an act. We do not believe that a single act would be anything but dominated by downtown Portland, and so we will, we will definitely ask for at least several acts. But it depends on the future information that comes before your committee and the sharing of same.
Yeah, just so, just for clarification, you know, we actually don't have an act in this, in this whole region, so at OTC, we have zero representation.
Well, J-PACT acts as our act, in a sense.
But oddly enough, they have no voice at the OTC, so, and that's, so that is the common objective that we all have. So if it comes back as, I think what we're advocating for is, if there is a single act, which ODOT seems to, you know, somewhat suggests that's probably where it's going to be, that we get equal representation, and if there's two acts, I've been insisting, as my email, I submitted on September 5th, says, that Clackamas County be, in its entirety, be its own act, and we got concurrence from the committee today, this morning, so that when we approach this on, on Monday, September 22nd, that we, again, position ourselves in the greatest area of influence and strength, so we make sure we get our fair share. I had had staff put together some material, not complete that, but I got some new information this morning, that indicated that if you look at the road mile, the road lane miles in the four counties affected, that being Clackamas, Multnomah, Washington County, and Hood River County, that Multnomah County has 35%, Clackamas County has 32%. Washington County had like 24, 22%, and I believe the remainder was Hood River, which had actually far more than its population. So the, the metro and the city of Portland are, seem to be advocating for a population base per capita, which really kind of puts us in a very weak position, and I don't think that there's a lot of interest in that. And I know that we don't have interest in that by, by the comments that... And I know that we don't have interest in that by, by the comments that have been made. So with, with your support, I will go and try to bring back one or two options that get us the strongest position that we think ODOT and the OTC will accept.
I appreciate that. I should, should mention that I appreciate your conversations with C-4, but the decision as to what we want will be decided by this commission and relayed to Mr. Savis for his representation on this board. I'd like to go to Commissioner Schrader.
Well, thank you. I want to let everyone know that the Canby Ferry is officially one hundred years old, and we had the privilege the other day of being there for that celebration. It was a lot of fun. And not only do we have photographs of the original fellows who opened up the ferry, we actually all took photographs in the same place, and I'm proud to say I was the only woman, you know? So a hundred years ago, there's been a little bit of a change, gentlemen, anyway, that we get some, some ladies representing, representing what we do here in the county. A few things I wanted to just talk about, and I'll try and go through this quickly. I wanted to let folks know that the White House Rural Council's Made in Rural America Export, an investment initiative, was hosted here in this county on August twenty-eighth. This was from the National Associations of Counties supporting it, the Association of Counties, and Clackamas County, and this was the final forum of five forums that were held across the United States. So it was quite a privilege to do this, and the purpose of this forum was, is basically to help rural economies understand how to grow their businesses and how to, how to be vital. And this is important for our county since we have such large rural areas, and we want to help our rural communities be as prosperous as some of our urban communities. It was attended by a number of dignitaries, not only from, from the White House on down, it was attended by folks with, with businesses throughout the county. And we had a presence of the USDA there as well, and they actually have dollars for rural communities. So our staff has been investigating that as we move forward with our economic development initiatives with this. The other thing I wanted to mention that, I had an opportunity to moderate an economic development forum on the coast, where I basically helped moderate a panel on innovative projects in rural regions, again, using the FDA as the jump-off point for that. And one of the things I've discussed doing with some of our legislators, as well as some of the county staff so far, I haven't, hasn't been quite ready for primetime yet in front of the commission, but I have the template of how they pull together that economic development discussion, and I think it would be well worth pulling that together here in this county to showcase what we can do. I had an opportunity to attend the National Association of the Mentally Ill Gala in support of NAMI, and I know I see Jeff back there, too, and we attended that, that dinner, and I think both of us came home with baskets that we purchased to support the organization as well. Other than that, I just want to mention that I'm very excited about our performance-based plan. I've been a big fan, Peter Drucker, who is the author of Management for Results, and he's also written many books on entrepreneurship and economic development. So I don't need to get an MBA, I think all I need to do is to read his books, and I think we're definitely getting this county back on track. So, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, because I left a very good friend of mine at my farm laying tile today, told him I would be home at seven, seven-thirty, I'm going to be short. One is that, you know, I, I will say that, Paul, you may have worked to get a strategic plan and stuff, but I always said the economy's going to turn around this year, and it did. So.
What a predictor.
And I got to, you know, give some credit to the administrator and the process, because I think it was good. And finally, I'm hoping that we can vote today to declare war on Poison Oak.
Okay.
Jim.
Told you about that farm, Jim.
Rancher Jim.
Rancher Jim.
Farmer Jim.
Wait, wait till those cows break out in the fence.
I move, we declare war on Poison Oak.
I'm not going to recognize Commissioner Bernard now.
That's a native plant.
Yeah. Commissioner Savis?
Just briefly, I, I spent most of my time on the act. I really did want to, I wanted to cover one other thing, or just one shout-out to Chief Morrissey with the Estacatea Fire Department. They, their hard work, and the volunteers and everyone involved, saved or prevented any structures from, from fire. I think that is significant, that there were no structures lost, and, and they were able to manage and put this together. And so Chief Morrissey, my hat's off to you and your team, and all the volunteers that helped prevent that loss. We hope that they can maintain this and get this contained ASAP.
Thank you. All right, real briefly, this Sunday, I volunteered for North Clackamas Park Recreation District to do a trail count on the Spring Water Trail. I had no idea how many people really used that trail, but I did after Sunday. My wife Maureen and I counted, I think it was a hundred and twenty-five people. Now, there was kind of a pseudo-marathon going on, and that's fine. But we were at Rug Road and, and Spring Water Trail, and it was, we were the only people to volunteer for a two-hour stint out there. But it was fascinating and enlightening to see people out there, and one of the people that ran up was Shirley Craddock, a metro counselor. So it was great to see them and some very interesting apparatuses that they ride on that trail. I had lunch with the county chairs, Deborah Kefore of Washington County, and Andy Dyke with Washington, with Multnomah County, and Andy Dyke with Washington. It's great for the three of us to sit down and talk about regional concerns. You can bet, the first thing I mentioned to them is, would you support I-205 and the expansion of three lanes each direction, please? So, you know, they chuckled, but said that they would be supportive. I went to, when Martha is not available for WICO, Workforce Investment Council, I, I do go understud. I went to a good meeting on Wednesday called Endangered Youth and the Workforce. You know, our, our youth are not working like they used to, and it's because the job availability is way down. Now, any employer out there should know that through WICO, they have some talented people that have been screened, available to you, and minimum wage doesn't matter, just get them a place to, to work. Since nineteen ninety, less than half of the teens are employed from, from the same period of time. So it is pretty dire out there. We talk about a recovery from the recession, et cetera, but our youth are not following along as easy as I would like to see them do. We had a festival yesterday, the Clackamas County Community Festival, out between our two big buildings here. It was very entertaining, very relaxed. They had a lot of displays, including from, from the Confederate Tribe, fascinating stuff from their museum. But it was really mellow and very candid. The three items, of course, were the booze, and then they had some entertainment, but they had food. You know, that gets people talking, for sure, but it was really a great time. As Martha mentioned, we celebrated the hundredth anniversary of a ferry at that location, and that was great fun to see all those people. And the great, the grand, great niece and the great nephew of M.J. Lee, who the ferry is named after, did show up for that celebration. We, I'm privileged enough to be opening the Oregon Juvenile Department Director's Annual Conference up in Wemmy on Monday. I'll do a, not a keynote speech, they don't want me to talk that long, but they'd like us, like to be welcomed to Clackamas County. We're pleased that they're, we're hosting this event. There will be in the north, just for public information, the commission will be together at the North Clackamas Chamber Luncheon Business of the County at the Monarch Hotel on September twenty-fourth, that's next Wednesday, at eleven-thirty PM. So call the North Clackamas Chamber if you'd like to attend and give them an RSVP. Aye. I know this is amazing to some people, because I'm not against light rail, I'm against the fact that the people don't get to vote on that big of an expenditure. So I have agreed to go and see the Telekom Bridge, the bridge over the Willamette. We get to walk that, I think it's going to be fascinating, because it is a beautiful structure, albeit the cost I would disagree with and should throw it into our roadways, which we greatly need, but that's my.
Throw a chain on you and a weight.
Yeah, that's, Ludlow is fair game that day, I got a feeling. I want you all to go to clackamas.us and check out our new website. A fantastic new website, and it's interactive with mobile phones as well. But it will continue to improve over a period of time. There's, Mary just put that up on the screen. Very interactive, and that search engine you see up there on the right-hand side is much better. Often you know, you, you search up a word or phrase and you get three thousand five hundred relevant hits, and, and it doesn't focus in on what you really were looking for. This is completely different. So I'm very proud of this. We passed this in the budget, not this year, but the previous year. It took a long time to develop, and I think the public will really enjoy this website. So that being said, ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before this commission this evening, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for watching.[1764.30][1764.30][music]